Can we have a roll call, please, for the council?
Council members Manukian, Najarian.
Here.
Wintaro.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Here, and for the agency.
Agency members Manukian, Najarian.
Here.
Wintaro.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Friedman.
Here, can we hear your report, please?
The Jennifer, the March 13th, 2012 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and Successor Agency was postponed on Thursday, March 8th, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall before you as Director of Community Development regarding discussion of on effects of AB 1X26 on the Community Development Department. This is a report only.
Thank you. Are we going to Mr. Ochoa or?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, I will be providing this presentation and certainly Mr. Agani and Mr. Lanza and their assembled staff would be able to answer any follow-up questions from council. What we have before you tonight, or this afternoon, is the presentation that really discusses what our best guess of what is about to happen, or may happen, to the Community Development Department by way of the redevelopment agency, or recently dissolved redevelopment agency, and to provide the council an understanding of both what the recommendations are for the future of the Community Development Department should no relief for the former redevelopment agency come to pass, as well as to set the stage perhaps for the upcoming budget presentations that will occur this spring heading into the 12, 13 fiscal year. What we have at this point in time is an extremely fluid environment. There is something, we are somewhere between the ceiling and the floor with respect to what the future of the Community Development Department and the assets of the former redevelopment agency actually hold for the city of Glendale. We, at this point, as you know, are trying to understand and best deal with AB 26, which was, or AB 1X26, which was the statute that was upheld by the State Supreme Court that basically stated that the California state legislature did indeed have the right to dissolve redevelopment agencies. Agencies are a creation of the legislature and state statute, and thus they can be undone by the legislature and state statute, and that the assets of the former redevelopment agency would be expeditiously unwound. So, at this point, we are trying to understand exactly what that means. So, what you have before you is the situation that we're dealing with wherein the state, for example, will require the cities to adopt a recognized obligation payment schedule, which you all have done as the successor agency, and to have the Oversight Board, which you have nominated two members for, to approve that ROPS, and to submit it to the state in advance, or to expeditiously supply that to the state, even though the Oversight Board won't be fully functional until such time as after the ROPS is due at the state of California. We're trying to understand where we are in this process, and as I say, it's extremely fluid and it's often confusing. The more we learn, the more questions we have. We are very cautious thus, at this point, to be very measured in the steps that we take because oftentimes if a government agency takes a step, it becomes increasingly difficult to untake that step, to unring that bell. And so, we are trying to be as measured and precise as we possibly can be. And then finally, we'll talk very briefly about some of the opportunities that do exist to ease the impact, to abate some of the negative impact that is associated with AB 1X26. But in terms of where we are at this point in time, the redevelopment agency had, the former redevelopment agency, had funded a number of different obligations. Most notably, it provided a great deal of funding for the Community Development Department through cost allocation, that is, the allocation of resources to internal service departments. The redevelopment agency was responsible for a little over $1 million towards information technology and administrative services like HR, finance, and other types of internal programs. The technology, infrastructure that we maintain just as a city department, that has to be absorbed and was absorbed in proper course by the redevelopment agency. There were also project-funded positions in other departments, project managers for capital improvement programs in the Public Works Department, for example, then other staff salaries that were assigned to specific programs like Cruz Night. We also had contracts with other departments like our public, or our Parks Department, or the Parks Division of the CSP to maintain some of the agency-owned property and assets. And then there was also, most notably, the loan repayment from the agency to the general fund of about $6 million. Between the cost allocation and the loan repayment, a bona fide structured loan with interest that has an amortization schedule that is in jeopardy of being undone by AB 26, that is, between those two items, that's $7 million that now the general fund would have to absorb because the general fund is a beneficiary of those allocations. This is really meant, I would not ask you to try to read what all of that says, what those little bubbles are. This, however, is meant as a graphic representation as to what the redevelopment, or what the Community Development Department looks like as of today, a snapshot taken on this 13th day of March 2012. The items that are in, I believe that's purple, are positions in the department funded by redevelopment dollars. If we were to simply move forward with the elimination as postulated by AB 1X26, you can see what the impact is there in terms of the critical missions of the Community Development Department, a modern and progressive leading community development department. We basically have at that point no economic development and redevelopment program. Our planning program is crippled quite a bit, and our neighborhood services functions are impacted drastically, as you see to the left.
Mr. Ochoa, that's really, I can't even read those department headings.
I mean. I'm sorry.
It's very difficult. Talking about a department being decimated, I know it's where there's a bunch of empty squares, but I can't.
What you see in?
Am I the only one?
No.
I'd be very surprised if anyone could read.
The handout.
I'll get you a new pointer.
Will my iPod save me? Pad, what do they call this thing?
iPad.
Maybe I could blow it up on that.
You can see it better on.
There we go. If you look here to the left, what we're, yeah, what we're seeing there is neighborhood services function.
iPad.
Here in the building, you'll notice Building Division is generally untouched primarily because their funding is coming from charges for service. In this area of planning, especially in, oh, housing, I'm sorry, in housing, you can see where our affordable programs and new construction are impacted, but some of our housing advisors are not. In redevelopment and economic development, again, completely decimated in the Planning Division, several positions would be lost.
So, what, I mean, in housing development, can you explain to me exactly what the positions were and the duties and versus the housing assistance?
Well, the, in the housing assistance, FUD, or FUD, HUD-funded positions, those would be untouched because those are positions that are dealing with our Section 8 vouchers and Section 8 program. The housing development would be those positions that are funded by the redevelopment program to do new construction projects like the Doran Gardens, or some of the other recently approved housing developments that have affordability as part of their central purpose and focus. The idea is that when you look at those, when you look at the department as it exists today, and you look at the department as it exists going forward, you're losing about 28 positions. That's a pretty significant impact on this particular department, and it hits in areas that matter the most to us as we head into the future. If redevelopment truly is gone and we've lost that ability to use the redevelopment powers under the state statutes to create new jobs, to abate blighting influences, to build capital improvements, to advocate and actually implement and execute smart growth, how is that going to happen? Because even under this scenario, we don't even have a, an economic development program. So, those impacts are indeed dramatic. Here, what we show you is.
Let me just say, Mr. Ochoa, that I'm under the assumption, and I'm planning, let's say, both today and in the coming budget sessions, to the proposition that there isn't going to be any more redevelopment funding, certainly not within the next budget year, and in my opinion, we probably won't see anything close to it for quite a few years. So, that's how I'm operating.
And you may be truer than you know. At the end of the presentation, I will talk a little bit about what we're seeing in Sacramento and why we're bringing this to you now versus two weeks ago or two weeks from now. Here in this slide, you see just another graphic breakdown of how the redevelopment funding is placed throughout the Community Development Department. As I say, building and safety stands alone for the most part. Housing is directly impacted. Neighborhood services, in terms of preserving neighborhoods and affordable units in those neighborhoods, is dramatically impacted. Planning to a lesser degree because, again, they do have some of the fees for service that help buoy their budget, but at the same time, a lot of our advanced planning focus may be lost. The redevelopment and economic development program, again, completely decimated. But what happens next? If redevelopment truly is gone and it is not coming back, we do have some resources coming back, and those resources, state legislators are quick to point out, and the governor's office are quick to point out, that, hey, cities, you actually are getting something back. The problem is that we're getting back pennies on the dollar in terms of what those resources are. We are allocated an AB 26 administrative budget that you see here in this bluish color. We estimate that over the next three years, over the existing. Asking for, I think we have. Yes, and so you also see here the share of the city's tax increment, the city is a taxing entity. Element agency. Terrified, nothing is certified at this point. We believe. We have.
The million.
Yes, we've had our property tax consultant. We can, it's not certified, it's not guaranteed at this point, but we believe that is an accurate number for the revenue that would return to the city of Glendale as a taxing entity.
Is there, are there any limitations on what that can be used for?
That would be general fund money.
From the properties. Tax increment, the fallback and normal tax return that we would get.
Essentially, yes, sir. You would be getting a 1.4 bump in your annual property tax payment allocation from the county of Los Angeles. Miscellaneous income is, what's that, Mr. Weaver?
Property tax increment.
Property tax revenue.
Probably tax revenue.
Just regular property tax.
That goes into the general.
Okay, and the county, let's see, what is the county currently withholding which tax?
The county currently is withholding, as we reported last week, we have received word from the County Auditor Controller that they have been directed to not make the spring disbursement of property taxes to Los Angeles County cities.
Well, this assumes that they will in the future.
That's a fair comment, I think, that, as you know, the counties under Prop 13, we pay as property owners, pay property taxes. That basically gets filtered through Sacramento, comes back down to the counties to be dispersed out to the cities. So, as we have seen in the past, the county is a creature of the state, and the state thus holds the purse strings. The state holds the purse strings now on school districts. The state now holds the purse strings, of course, and has forever on counties. There is one way to look at it, as Mr. Weaver points out, that there's an argument to be made that all this is, is another power grab by the state of California to control the spending of, by local independent, formerly independent cities. It's a fair criticism and apt observation, I believe. When you look at miscellaneous income, other income, that is income that's coming from rents, from properties that the city owns, the, maybe some sign revenue off the Trader Joe's building up in Montrose, things like that. Housing income is a smattering of reimbursements and repayments on first-time homebuyer loans where they get refinanced, and equity share dollars come back to the city. But this, again, is just a graphic representation of what that money looks like.
The other income shoots up in 2014, 2015 to $578,000. What makes that?
We have some structured payments. Phil, do you want to?
Sure. What we included in that is the transient occupancy tax, the hotel tax, from the courtyard by Marriott. We believe that it'll come online by that time, and that is a projection.
Or any other hotels that are built.
Any other hotels, but the number that we use there was a projection from that hotel.
I do think it's important for council to recognize that if we are, in this event, counting not just the lease revenue that accrues back to the agency, but also speculative TOT. Speculative may sound like the wrong word, but truly, it's something that hasn't yet been realized, that that would accrue to the general fund unless the council pushes it into another direction. So, I just want to make sure we don't count it twice. In any event, what you see here on this slide is a three-year forecast for the Community Development Department. There you go. Three-year forecast, if we were to do nothing in terms of cuts, where we would end up at the end of 12, 13 is a $4.1 million deficit in the department. And just through attrition, if we made no cuts, but just through attrition allowed the department to shrink, we still believe that by 2014, 2015, we are facing a $2.7 million deficit. Obviously, this is unacceptable. It's not a good business practice, as Mr. Quinteto points out. It may be sometime before we see revenue flow back to cities on a pace that was equal to that, that was generated by redevelopment funding. So, this is, this is the world if we just moved forward with what we have. What you see here is a discussion about the proposed need for a new structure because we cannot simply just absorb those deficits over the coming years. What we want to talk with you today about is the recognition that there is a loss of funding, as you know, but that we need to continue to provide service. We are going to have a Community Development Department. Part of that Community Development Department will be a set number of functions. The funding for those functions and services really ties back to what the council's vision is for the service to the community. So, we'll talk about priorities and policies, we'll talk about some of the programs, and also maintaining some of the requirements at a state and federal level, some of the mandates that we have to adhere to just to make sure that we can continue to function as a municipal, as a municipality.
Sorry, to slide seven again.
There you go.
And explain what those footnotes mean.
Reductions that if all we did here in this, and really, this is the one to pay attention to, the deficit, deficit, deficit. This is a function of only making cuts to the department through attrition. Somebody retires, somebody leaves, we don't fill that spot, as opposed to making some of the hard cuts that we are recommending as part of this program. These are salaries and benefits and MNO, and we aren't talking about some of the programs that council may still want to see, like Cruz Night or some of the other programs. This basically is us lighting the lights, coming to work, processing plans, but not making.
So, doing the same events?
Not the same events necessarily. Again, this is, this is salaries, benefits, and MNO.
Okay, but so it's not cutting out programming? I mean.
It does not include funding for programming.
And I think, Mr. Najarian, we would say to you, we don't have any money for programming at this point. That's why we've noted it's not here, because we wouldn't have any enforceable obligations that we could use those previously tax increment dollars for. So, this is, this is bare bones. This doesn't even tell you what the community would lose in project and program.
But it doesn't include Cruz Night?
Does not include Cruz Night.
Or the Christmas Parade at the Fourth of July? All those are not.
Doesn't include marketing. In the types of incentives, in the creative corridor, we had adopted some incentives in the art and entertainment district. All of those things are not listed here because they're programming dollars, and we simply will not receive those.
Facade improvements?
Facade improvements.
So, what column do those programming funds go into? The beginning budget? I mean, that $6.6 million, does that include salaries and?
No, that, and again, we're trying to show you, this is just salaries, MNO, and salaries benefits and MNO. It does not include programming. So, if you wanted to do some programming, we would have to go even beyond this.
But didn't we use programming money with our redevelopment funds?
Yes.
So, how much would the real?
Well, that's where it comes to the $10 million, right? I mean, this is far short.
Actually.
Well, you know, we'll.
What's that figure? Is that going to come up later, or?
Let me, let me start this particular slide.
Because I think our, I mean, my point is, I think our budget is a lot, in a much greater deficit situation than just the 4.1, the 3.6, and the 2.7.
If you were going, I'm sorry, if you were going.
No, no, hold on, Phil. It truly is. What we want to point out here is that this 6.6 is just our people. If you wanted to include programming and Cruz Night and facade improvement grants and anything else, this number is 7.6, 8.6, 9.6, whatever you want it to be. We can easily cut programming. It's a little more difficult to actually cut the bodies that do that programming, and what this points out to you is that we don't think it's enough, just simply, and I don't think the CDD Department thinks it's enough, just to simply come in, light the lights, and do the work, we actually have to have resources with which to do it. And so, we're telling you that if all you did was make payroll, then you're still at a 4.1 deficit, a 3.6 deficit, and ultimately by 2014, '15, a $2.7 million deficit. We don't think that's acceptable either, given the reality that we're facing. What we talk about, and kind of nice segue into this slide, the core services of the Community Development Department that the council's vision has built, the things that we do right now, we do for a purpose. The neighborhood services, the planning, building, safety, redevelopment, economic development, and housing. You could make the argument that economic development and redevelopment, that's the wheelhouse of AB 1X26, and since that's gone, we should just eliminate those functions entirely. I would submit to you that that's being penny wise and pound foolish. We need to have some kind of economic development program. I can assure you that the cities that we compete with are maintaining some semblance of an economic development program. So, if we do maintain such a program, we are going to have to make adjustments in these other areas, and indeed, outside of even the Community Development Department, in order to maintain that level of service. But as we look at it, we know that a Community Development Department that the community of Glendale desires has at least these six basic functions. We know that council wants us to maintain ours that are agreeable, that reflect well on terms of customer service at the counter and here in the Municipal Services Building, because people are still going to want to do remodels and additions, and hopefully, new investments on their own, just as private equity deals. We know that we simply can't sit back and allow the turnaround for building, safety, and fire plan check to go on for months and months and months. We know that our competitive advantage is getting folks out the door and turning those plans around because time is money. We know that people want to have, to be proud of the neighborhoods that they have, the programs that are implemented, even those that are augmented by NGOs and quasi-governmental collaboratives like Glendale Beautiful and Clean and Beautiful Group. We know that that has to be seeded and at least led by the city, at least that's been our experience in order to maintain some continuity. The entitlement services, the concierge service that brings new projects and new investment to town is important to us. And of course, the council's been very vocal on affordable housing services and programs. As I say, these are the areas that we know we need to focus on. Some might call it a luxury, I think, in Glendale because we are so focused on design and maintaining a high level of quality. Design services is critically important to you all. You've made that very clear in my short tenure here, and certainly, the staff appreciates that. But the structure, the code compliance, the quality neighborhoods and preservation, all of those things have a place in this future Community Development Department. But we also know that the trade-off is the people that we have. And as Mr. Najarian pointed out, when you look at what that previous chart was to show what the deficits are, how do we bring those into alignment? How do we balance out if we are, our business is one of a service industry, so the major cost is our people. Thus, if we are going to balance out our books, it's going to have to come with the painful recognition that we will have to make staffing cuts if we do not receive any kind of abatement of the impact of AB 1X26. You know, how long will we hold on to those positions? We'll talk about that in just a second. And we also have, it's something that is, you're very proud of the departments here, the other department directors, on the second point, to note that other departments are saying, we do have some vacancies that are essential to be filled, an EOC coordinator, for example, a fire inspector, other positions that need to be filled, why not try to fill them with Glendale employees first before opening them up to the outside market to be able to place our people? We would like to be in a position where we have as few layoffs as possible, but we have to understand truly what that means on an order of magnitude on an organization our size. So, what are we looking at? What's the recommendation from staff? In balancing out what those core missions are, what we believe the council wants in terms of a Community Development Department, yet still trying to reach over a period of two and a half years, a balanced department, we believe that we need to cut about 28 positions from the Community Development Department. This equates to about $3 million in cuts. We would be going effectively from 135 employees down to 107. We have some good news at this point, in that, as Mr. Quinteto pointed out, the numbers, where are they? The numbers are still soft, are they not? Yes, they are. And as we get more information on what our resources are, and more information about what our costs are, and what the layoff scenario, should that come to pass, what that would be, we are coming to understand that if we have, we're eliminating $6.6 million in redevelopment funding for positions, and we're recommending $3 million in cuts, that leaves us with a $3.6 million budget in the Community Development Department that needs to be addressed somehow. However, as we showed you previously, between the new property tax revenue that would come back to Glendale as a taxing entity, and the administrative budget for, that's allowed to us under AB 1X26, and the, some of that miscellaneous income that we briefly hit upon, we think that that raises about $2.48 million, which leaves us with a deficit of 1.14 million for the former redevelopment agency-funded portion of the Community Development Department. So, what you see here are the cuts broken out among the different divisions of Community Development. One in administration, three in building and safety, eight in housing, six in neighborhood services, four in planning, four in redevelopment, two in economic development. 28 positions, 2.7 million. Plus MNO gets you to the number here, the department-wide reductions. So, going back to the difficult-looking slide, again, what we want to be able to show you is kind of just graphically, this is the current redevelopment agency, this is the agency if we move forward with the cuts that we're identifying. So, you can see where those hits are. We're preserving an element of economic development. Redevelopment, of course, is totally gone. We are hitting housing to a degree, but not nearly as drastically as shown previously. We're trying to preserve some component of neighborhood services as well. What does that do to us? Well, in this current fiscal year, or I'm sorry, in the coming fiscal year, we are still projecting a $1.1 million deficit. However, by 2014, '15, we're actually projecting a surplus, such as it is, within this portion of the Community Development Department. Obviously, this is predicated on the council allowing us with respect to the Community Development Department. Development Department, allowing us to stretch out these impacts over this period of time that we're showing here. Actually, before I get, I leave this slide, I want to be very clear. What you are looking at here today basically takes the Community Development Department, pulls away that redevelopment agency funding, and strips down the Community Development Department to its bare essentials, under this recommendation. What that does is basically place the Community Development Department in the general fund pool with all the other general fund departments. Now, I've already told you that the redevelopment agency had been funding a $6 million a year loan repayment to the general fund. There's also about $1.1 million in cost allocation that the agency used to pick up. Those costs generally are still there, not entirely, but still generally there, because that number is fungible based on the size of our overall organization, which, as we're showing you here, could very well cut, or could very well shrink. Coupled with this estimate, this plan on the redevelopment, or on the Community Development Department, what that means is, as we head into the 12, 13 fiscal year, we will be eight, nine, maybe 10 million out of whack heading into the 12, 13 fiscal year. So, these cuts that you see proposed for Community Development Department, if we move forward with them, these may not be the only cuts to the Community Development Department. Now, it may very well be the extent, because I believe we have a high level of confidence that in this program that you see before you, and this plan, we are cutting the department as much as we can and still maintain those core missions that the council wants to have maintained. What does that mean? It means that the bulk of the deficit of that eight, nine, 10 million will need to come from places other than the Community Development Department, other general fund departments, community services, parks, public safety, parts of the public works function, parts of the management services function. All of our departments, like at no other time before, all of our departments are in this particular struggle together. So what we're presenting to you is really the effort to put Community Development in the same pool, in the starting blocks, if you will, with all of our other departments, before we get to the budget adoption process this spring.
Scott, I'm sorry, I'm still confused now about this eight to 10 million gap you're talking about. Given your proposal, that's with your proposal for the reductions?
Correct.
So the rest of the money, then, is coming from the loan repayment, the loss of that? But what about the programming? Is that not including any of the programming?
That is not included at this point. That programming, if the council wants to add it back in, would be a function of the budget adoption process this spring.
Okay, because we need to, that, my guess is going to be that some of those programs, like the Montrose Christmas Parade, maybe Cruz Night, are things that council may very well want to include, and we're going to have to, at some point, like you said, have a fuller understanding of what that is as well.
Yes, ma'am.
I was hoping that that $10 million figure included that programming, but...
It may very well. I didn't want to take the luxury with council to say, we are going to decide for council...
No, I understand. I was hoping that that number had already included all that programming, but it sounds like it's a lot worse than that. That's just our basic operating costs and our...
I don't mean to scare you. It may vary, the basic operating costs, if everything were frozen as of right now, is about, that deficit is a little over eight million, eight and a half million perhaps. And if you were banking on a $10 million deficit, that would leave you a million and a half worth of programming that you could do. Yes? Yeah, so that's, that all has to come into pass. But what I didn't want to do is overinflate what we think our personnel, MNO costs are. So if the council, just for the sake of argument, said, you know, we do want to have programming, and we think that programming, whatever it might entail, is, ought to be pegged at a million and a half dollars a year, then this deficit would be about $10 million heading into the next fiscal year. Does that make sense?
You can tell.
As soon as we can. I would like to have this org chart fleshed out a little bit. By that, I mean, you look at the chart, you've got admin analysts, et cetera, et cetera, but a little more detail. For instance, Neighborhood Services is losing six full-time equivalent positions. What do those six do versus the eight, or, the three in building and safety? So I'd like to have a little more detail on what some of those positions currently do.
And understanding that all that has to play out with the bumping rights of the folks that are identified under this plan, certainly. Yes, sir.
And you did mention that there are other positions outside of Community Development, the CDD, that are funded through redevelopment funds.
Yes, sir.
So those aren't on the table? Those aren't being looked at at this point?
I believe those are part of the discussion with the HR staff and management services.
I think we need to look at that, too, because, you know, we need to weigh the benefit that those positions, I know some are police, I think, some are...
Primarily, it's going to be in areas of capital improvement. And if there's no money for capital improvement because there's a reduced amount for programming, for example, if we aren't building the central library renovation, the employees that would manage that project wouldn't have a purpose at this point. That's the type of funding that we're looking at, but definitely. This discussion is focused primarily on CDD, but those discussions on the ancillary positions funded by redevelopment, that would have to come to pass. But the eight, nine, 10 million number heading into next fiscal year, that is a number that is all-encompassing for the organization at this point.
Question. Last year, we cut, what, 18 million?
Yes, sir.
If redevelopment was whole, none of this came to pass redevelopment, what would be looking at to cut this year?
That's the heartbreaking part of this. Because of the good work of the council and staff last year, you are essentially balanced, as Mr. Elliott pointed out in his mid-year. I mean, I think it's 250,000 on 172 million dollar general fund budget. If we didn't have to deal with this particular situation, we could begin in this coming fiscal year to address some of the other issues, the more vexing issues that the council has identified previously, like restoring ongoing regular funding for the CIP program.
But what I'm trying to understand, as Mr. Stubber told me before he left, we cut some 18 million for this year. The next one would be a lot less, only eight to 10 million. You're just telling me there wouldn't be any?
Unless he was focusing on the loss of the redevelopment agency, I mean, he was in a position to know what the obligations of the redevelopment agency were. I couldn't speak to what his statement was to you.
So the reserve funding and all the different categories were all addressed in the last budget that we did? Nothing has to be addressed this time?
No, you do, we do, have issues that will need to be addressed in the coming year's budget. For example, our workers' comp fund, the fund balance needs to be augmented, our liability fund needs to be augmented, our information systems infrastructure, just like our CIP, needs to be reinvested in. All of those things are costs of doing business that we need to put additional resources towards. But like replacing the roof on your house, if you don't have the dollars, you don't not, you know, feed the children in order to put the roof on the house, you make allotments, or you make allowances, and you make cuts, and you trim back. The council trimmed back extensively last year. What we're recommending to you is that we have to cut back fairly extensively again this year. Your employees, it's uncanny. Glendale is leading the entire region with respect to the concessions that the council and staff negotiated with the bargaining groups, in terms of how much the employee groups share in the cost of their own employment. You have pioneered that ground. Could you go back to that well? Well, that's the discussion that we would have to have under the budget discussion, in the larger budget discussion. But certainly, we are at a point where, had we not have to deal with this, you are effectively operationally balanced. But we do have some structural issues we need to talk about.
Maybe that's what Ms. Stubber was talking, like in the workers' comp area, those, we would still having to be addressed those, to get those up, which would impact the overall budget. But you leave them where they are for now, because we don't have the money. But you said, structurally, we'd be balanced.
Operationally, we would be balanced.
Structurally, not.
Structurally, we want to go and make those, because, you know, just be, if you don't have the money to repair the roof, to use that analogy, doesn't mean that the problems with the roof go away. It just means that we're kicking that can down the road. And when we start talking about organizational infrastructure, it's pay me now or pay me later, just like it is with any other kind of asset. So, you know, we know that the first step is recognition. I think he certainly recognized that. I think the council has recognized that. But it's a matter of triaging the open wounds that we have right now, and this redevelopment issue is a large gateway.
So we'll try to remain operationally sound. Structurally, we'll have to wait to some degree.
To a degree.
Because we're going to take this hit now.
Because, well, and yes, effectively, you're going to be faced with walking this line right now, because, and while we talk in this next slide, the recognized obligation payment schedule, if the oversight board approves that, and the State Department of Finance approves that, well, then, that means that for the balance of calendar year 2012, that everything I've just described doesn't have to occur. That the funding for all of our operations, for all of our people, that has been trimmed down, after all these cuts, we're down to, we've gotten through the fat and the meat, and we're down to the bone, we at least can continue with the department as it is today, with our organization as it is today, if that ROPS gets approved and not overturned by the State Department of Finance. The cruel part of all of this is then that all of our people, and all of you certainly, have to go through this same exercise next January, because that ROPS needs to be re-approved at regular intervals. And so you don't know that you're well until you're not sick for an extended amount of time. Hopefully, based on what we've seen, the legislature seems to be saying the right words in terms of restoring some semblance of an economic development, redevelopment program. But we can, I'll talk about that in just a second. But as I mentioned, we do have on that ROPS, the housing program, our bond proceeds, as you know, we do have bond proceeds that were moved from the redevelopment agency to the city. We would hope that those don't have to be pulled back and given over to the state of California. There are some legislative fixes that are underway. Last Wednesday, the legislature, I think it was the HCD committee, heard testimony on 1585. The good news is that a lot of state legislators are recognizing what we all have recognized, and are introducing bills that would address different pieces of what the problem that we're facing really is, and how it impacts us at the local level. What you heard last Wednesday, unfortunately, and the reason why we put information out to all of our employees that day and later in the week, in advance of this particular hearing, was because the sentiment from Sacramento seems to be, as Mr. Quintero pointed out, that we will get there, we believe, but probably not too soon. Keep in mind that the state budget deficit is in the billions, again. And they will certainly look to shore up their own budget before, our fear is that they will certainly look to shore up their own budget before they ever offer us any assistance. So what we have is what we have for the time being, until we know otherwise. But there are bills, you know, the Perez bill, and again, introduced by the speaker, which you would hope and expect has some, gives some indication that it has a snowball's chance. It would basically expand the definitions of that which can be included on our obligation payment schedule, and could include things like the bond proceed, or the city loan, which would mean $6 million to the department, to the city's general fund. Keeping housing balances, that's also discussed in 1585 and 654. The bond proceeds are discussed under 986, that's the bill by Dutton. And then there's a series of other spot bills, and as we had indicated previously, early on, I think what you're seeing now are a lot of legislators hearing from all of their cities, and all of them coming forward saying, well, wait, my city is unique. My city is different, because I have this very special venue, like the Alex, and I want to see something done to preserve and protect that, because I don't want that to be just auctioned off to the highest bidder.
Has any of our legislators made that offer for us, for the Alex?
They, I think, would be willing to do it. They are asking more questions certainly about it. The short answer to your question is, no, they have not, but they are asking questions.
The state assemblyman who I met with thought it was okay for the state to take over the Alex Theater. They can run it.
I've had discussions, as latest today, with Senator Lou, who is asking, you know, about what best case and worst case scenarios, and ultimately, what the city would like to see done with the Alex. At least, that was the sense from her staff. But I think what that points out is that, you know, where you stand depends on where you sit. And, you know, folks are going to want to support their local cities as best they can, even if it's only to introduce a bill. The problem that you have is that if every legislator introduces their own special legislation, nothing gets done, because the system gets gridlocked. And so we have been hopeful, and maybe what is starting to happen, is that legislators are recognizing there's a more holistic need, a larger fix to this issue. You don't get rid of 50 years of statute that is executed by just, you know, thousands of very complex, intricate, and unique deals, and expect to have all of that history go away in the space of 90 days.
Scott, what is the legality? I mean, what would happen if, what is the legality of a city loan, an agency loan to a city that's being paid back, just being wiped away? I mean, is it like a company going bankrupt? Is that the way they're looking at it? It doesn't have to be repaid? Or is there any chance for us to litigate this and get some relief?
Madam Mayor, members of council...
And that goes for the Alex, because it's my understanding that at one point, the Alex was owned by the city. So the city had paid money for that venue, and then it was deeded to the redevelopment agency. But the city then, we already, for the state to say that they're going to sell that when the city had purchased it, also doesn't seem right.
Certainly, I would defer to the city attorney in terms of the legalities of it, but the problem that we have is that AB 1X26 is so very vague on so many issues, the short answer is, ma'am, we don't know. And, but neither does the state. And so what you heard last Wednesday, what I took away, and maybe it's wishful thinking from the hearings last Wednesday, is the State Department of Finance representative saying, we're not prepared to handle this project right now, so we are going to walk softly, and maybe not kick back everything that the cities are sending to us, which maybe means that we need to stand up our oversight board as absolutely quickly as we can, to try to get as much through as we can, while there is still this uneasiness on the Department of, the Department of State, or the Department of Finance. Because if you read 1 Act, or AB 1X26, and Mike can correct me, but it sounds as though there's a great deal of discretion on the part of the state as to what is and what is not enforceable.
And I would concur, Madam Mayor, just the way the legislation was written with respect to the city loan, it was clearly an intent by the legislature to abrogate that particular contract. And so that, I think that'll be an issue that's not litigated by us, it'll probably be litigated by some agency, or probably a multitude of agencies. With respect to the Alex, I couldn't say better than Mr. Ochoa, because the language is so vague that every lawyer that reads it interprets it differently. And so it's not clear how we'll be able to treat that under the statute, and even our own legislators who represent our area have interpreted it differently. So something we're looking at, and I think we'll actually be bringing the litigation and legal issues to you rather quickly for some further discussion.
Comment. When is the state budget supposed to be adopted?
Slide one.
And usually, we wait to see what the state's going to do to us before we adopt our budget. And let's see, this is an election year. All the assemblymen, state senators are out there campaigning, want to do the right thing for their clients. And you have state embleths and state senate, who have at least alluded to me, they cannot get to the governor. So how can they do anything if the governor's going to veto it? Combine those three sets of things together, it's a big morass, and we're, in my opinion, we're not going to know much of anything for the rest of the year.
Well, I'm hopeful that you'll see in the May revise, some, the cement starts to dry, because the multi-multi-billion dollar budget deficit needs to be addressed. And even if it's only because the voters have tied the adoption of a budget to the payment of the state legislators, that seemed to get their attention last year, hopefully it'll get their attention this year. That doesn't necessarily mean that a quick decision by them is a good decision for us. But I think what we want more than anything else is simply to know. I think what our employees want, and our customers want, and our residents want, is simply to know. know. Are we in or are we out?
Well, my perception, 99% of the people in this city, or any city, don't know what is going on. All they recognize is that they can get up in the morning, go to work on safe streets, their garbage is picked up, the water and power, the lights go on, the water is there.
The great city council is still working for them.
Right. But how many residents, 200,000 in Glendale, are here today? None. How many are going to watch this video tonight when they get home rather than American Idol or something else? None. It's not going to, until it hurts them in the pocketbook. We stop collecting trash every week and we pick it up once every other week. We don't do the streets until we do it every two weeks. Then the calls start coming. What are you doing? Screaming at us. And then we'll try to explain, well, if you've been watching all this going on, you'd know. So that the ire of the public to get involved soon enough with knowledge non-existent ain't going to happen.
Well, I'm hopeful that what you'll see and what we're seeing even now, I mean, the reason that the legislators, I think, are, even if it's only posturing, the reason why they're starting to say the right things is, and with all due respect to our city council, they knew you were all going to be mad at them. They knew that you all were going to call them. What I think has made them say, well, maybe I made a mistake, is the amount of information and feedback that they are getting from the community. You know, whether you like the information age in social media or not, the idea that literally touch of a button, you can register with your state legislator, your displeasure with the idea that programs that I care about are now going to be cut. And how did you vote?
But you see, one thing that hit the public, look at LA, the school district. When this started affecting the kids, the whole population of families with children instantly involved because it's hitting them right now. And the stuff we're talking about isn't going to hit the consumer till later and then it'll be gradual. It won't be the same kind of a situation we see in LA.
I do think that Mr. Najarian's point is well taken, that the fact that the council is here, the fact that the council is well-versed, and that the council's willing to fight is critically important. You know, it has to be. Because the reality is, you know, cities are the closest level of government to the people. And is it any wonder that cities are the most functional level of government? We don't have the opportunity to posture and to, you know, give a forearm shiver by way of threatening to eliminate a program just to get folks' attention. If we do it, it's because we have to. Sacramento has not operated nearly as effectively or as efficiently for many, many years.
I understand, Mr. Ochoa. I know I'm sounding pessimistic because I am pessimistic, but I'll shut up and not say anything more.
Not at all, sir. I mean, this is where we need to hear your direction and insight. Because as we look to the future, you know, there are different ideas that we may have for funding. What you're seeing the state start to gravitate now, even though they're not calling it redevelopment, is basically a redo of redevelopment, tax increment financing, infrastructure, district financing, which are basically the same type of model. And that'll start to move forward. But there's also other things we can do, experiment with business improvement districts and property-based business improvement districts, allowing different types of signage in key locations, things that will generate revenue that can be specifically earmarked for economic development. But I think in terms of keeping folks positive and focused and willing to fight, willing to back the city council's efforts to defend that which belongs to Glendale, I think we need to try to follow through and execute the programs that we have. Let people see what the vision really is and was and validate that.
Mr. Quintero?
I just want to say, I think we need to focus on the realities at hand, and that is that we can't count on the monies that we had in the past, period. I mean, I can think of community colleges, K through 12, the Cal State system, there's so many other issues that are going to turn the heads of the legislature and the governor that we just have to be, it's not a question of being pessimistic, it's a question of being, you know, looking at reality and what we're faced certainly for this budget year and I think for the next year also. I mean, we just have to come up with innovative ideas of how to get some income coming in, but don't rely on the state or this whole concept of redevelopment and tax increment because it's over. It's over and I just don't see that it's going to.
I wasn't going to say anything else, but I will. Where do the water rates hit us? Next week? People will be in here screaming, you're raising our water rates. How can you do that? Well, it's income.
I think we owe it to not only the residents, but we owe it to also the employees so that they can start to, to kind of figure out what they may have to do and what they're kind of facing, so.
Question. Do employees who are laid off have the benefit of unemployment?
Yes.
Compensation? Does that go for any employee at any level of that organizational chart?
You know, that I don't know. I couldn't tell you.
Council members? We kept on the rest side.
Now, Mr. Weaver, how could you?
Oh, we got into slavery issue, you know.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, all employees, anyone laid off would have the ability to apply for unemployment insurance.
But there's no loophole due to a elimination of a?
No. If the moving party is the employer and it's something, you know, not misconduct-related, they would qualify. And there is a cost back to the organization for that.
So seeing as we're talking about this issue of layoffs, what the idea at this point is, is that based on the meeting that we had with the Community Development Department and discussions that we've had with those 28 specific employees that are in jeopardy of possibly having their position eliminated, over the coming month, over the coming three to four weeks, HR department will play out all of the various bumping scenarios so that we have for those employees by early March, or early April, a, the maximum amount of time possible to give them the opportunity to find new employment. Basically, what amounts to almost 90 days. But again, I understand and do not disagree with the confrontation of the brutal facts such as they are, that where we are now and what it looks like, that the state may very well completely reject our ROPS statement. There is a chance it could be approved. And so as I said at the beginning, we want to make sure that whatever project, or whatever steps we take, we take them judiciously. The projects that you see here are all the projects that we have on that ROPS. And some of these, we believe that there are opportunities for the city to drive forward even, even in the absence of redevelopment. I know that the Lemley Project is critically important to the city council. We are meeting with the development team upcoming to try to bring that and the Alex Theater expansion into focus and fruition. The Disney campus is something that we have an existing DDA on, a development agreement on. We believe that that will be sustained, we hope that will be sustained based on the terms of that deal. We also have the courtyard project. Some of these other ones maybe are more or less likely, the Central Library, Central Avenue, the fire station, the Civic Center expansion, the relocation, community development. All of those probably without the ongoing assurance of the state do not happen. But we do know that the council's priority is getting that Lemley Project done and doing what we can to not only protect the Alex, but make it a viable venue in the future.
What is the timeline on the state and the potential rejection or acceptance?
A great question because the state, the statute says that we should expeditiously move forward. So we have met with Supervisor Antonovich's representatives and have provided him names, suggested names for his selections to the Oversight Board. As you know, the city council has appointed Phil Lanza Fama and myself to the Oversight Board. And talking with the GCC and GUSD, they have made their nominations to their respective bodies. At this point, we're waiting for the, as an administration of law, of at the county superintendent of schools and the state chancellor of community colleges to actually ratify the selections by GUSD and GCC. When that happens, we can actually move forward immediately with the Oversight Board. From there, the Oversight Board has to have all the same Brown Act requirements in terms of publication of agendas and what have you. But if we were able to by the end, by the early part of April, to have the Oversight Board up and running and have them approve the ROPS, send it off to the State Department of Finance, the Finance has three days in which to either allow it or reject it. So as you can tell, because our budget process begins in earnest in the spring, we want to know what the score is. We want to know are they going to reject it or are they going to approve it? Because at least that gives us the assurance that we can live through the coming fiscal year. In terms of next steps, that's a great segue.
Excuse me, I have another question, this time for the city attorney. So in terms of existing contracts, and I see some things here that we have contracts with another party, the fact that redevelopment is gone, the state legislature has, the redevelopment agency as an entity is gone, how about the enforcement of those contracts? Where does that stand? I mean, it's nothing that we did, we didn't change position, but in fact...
The agreements that we, Mr. Quintero, the agreements that we entered, the agency entered into with third parties such as Mona or Lemley, the successor agency became the successor in interest to those agreements. So we have the authority to enforce those agreements. And if there's obligations or monetary obligations that the agency had, that falls to the successor agency and that ended up on our ROPS. So if we had some monetary payment we have to make under those agreements, we're entitled to get property tax from the county auditor to pay those obligations.
If approved by the state, right?
Correct, although, I mean, we...
If they submit it, they approve it.
It has to be approved by the Oversight Board and then Department of Finance would have the opportunity to call for a review of that. But the agreements that we have with third-party private developers, the legislation is pretty clear that those are enforceable and that there wouldn't be a legal leg to stand on, so to speak, for the county to say, no, we're not going to pay you for those.
And that's why they're so important for those projects to continue. Because if we don't, if those projects don't go forward, it's not as though that money comes back to the city. That money and those properties go to the state. So if Lemley doesn't happen, we lose that property and anything could happen to it. We don't have any control over it anymore. So a project that, you know, we all liked could be replaced by something that we all hate and we have no ability to do anything about it.
That is the fear.
And besides, you know, all of the bad effects of people being laid off and projects not happening and all of that we're losing from the city and the quality of life that our residents have come to expect through the Redevelopment Agency, what strikes me as so unfair is that this community invested millions and millions of dollars in things like the Americana at Bran on the promise that we would be getting tax increment from these projects. That was the, that was the impetus to do those projects. And now the state's saying, sorry, you may have invested those millions and millions of dollars, but we're not going to give you the benefit of that tax increment anymore. We're going to take it instead. So it's really, I think, a very basic betrayal of what was promised to this community when they did go through and do a lot of those projects. I mean, even though it's good that they're there and there are benefit, but we're certainly not going to receive the benefit that we were promised by the state when they set up redevelopment agencies.
That's right. Then just to close out, we are progressing with the somber effort to close down, wind up the Redevelopment Agency as stipulated by 1X26. That is part of this discussion here today as well as our ongoing discussions with the employee groups. We are still monitoring all of our legislative interests and continuing to provide information, are willing to testify if necessary. Hopefully, as all of these bills come to a head this spring, we'll have that opportunity to help effectuate the coming change, whatever that might be. We are looking to preserve as much as we can through the ROPS process and all of our assets. And at the same time, still trying to make sure there's a balance with what the council's vision is for the Community Development Department and those functions that you care a great deal about with the economic realities that we are dealing with. So with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions. Certainly, the assembled Community Development Team is here and we can address any questions.
All to say is a comment that I completely agree with Mr. Quintero, that we should not, that we should plan for the worst-case scenario. I would be surprised if we get any legislative relief. It would be great, but I just haven't seen it, patience of it locally. And at some point, I also agree with him that we need, as a council, maybe in closed session, to sit down and see what these positions are and how they affect the community. We're going to need that to make these decisions. Because what people don't realize when they hear redevelopment is a lot of the people that you interact with as a community member are being funded through the Redevelopment Agency. You know, Sam Engel and Neighborhood Services, who are doing some of the art projects around the community, the Alex Theater, case planners at Planning Department, people behind the desk when you go to get a building permit, a lot of these are going to be affected and we need to be sure that we can minimize the impact to the community as much as possible. But I also agree that economic development needs to be something that we, that we do focus on because it's one area that we can actually see a return. And I, when I was at the Conference of Mayors, I had the benefit of hearing about economic development programs from cities that didn't have redevelopment, that did it completely on their own through their general fund. And some of them, one of them, I think it was maybe Seattle, said that they actually, their council was initially very skeptical, but they went for it, they set up a set of metrics to measure it. In the following year, they increased the budget because they had such a good return from the investments that they made. So I think that it is something that we need to keep going. It's important in terms of job creation in the local community, it's important for the business assistance that we give, especially to small businesses and our neighborhood business districts is very important. And I'm not going to, I really don't want to be the one that sees all that go away because the state legislature couldn't balance their budget and wants to do it by taking money from us.
Thank you very much. We will continue to move forward and refine this process, but this does help us set the stage for the upcoming budget process that'll begin in early April. Thank you very much.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
For the?
City council.
Council is adjourned?
Move we adjourn for the successor agency.
Second.
The successor agency is adjourned. We have closed session.